To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, morning everyone. Anybody have any conflicts of interest on the agenda? Wasn't considered approved. Now, Roger, Richard Reepin gives us the previous meeting, please.
May twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Gene Hyden Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Member absent was Dozart. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The board approved hiring of Ivan Zamago, seasonal yellow smoke attendant, and change of status for Connor Paulson, yellow smoke park ranger, conservation at ten oh five is advertised. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to open the public hearing regarding vacation of the following roadway segments. All that part of two hundred and seventy-third street lying north of Deloitte Boulevard in the west half of section twenty-four eighty, eighty-four thirty-nine, and all that part of the unnamed roadway lying east of Deloitte Boulevard in the southwest quarter, section five eighty-four thirty-eight for May twenty-one, twenty, twenty-four at ten oh five. Motion passed unanimously. There were no written or oral objections at ten oh six. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg to close the hearing. A motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Schultz to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, the final order roadway vacation. Okay, voting I, Schultz, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously. Rachel Burns spoke to the board about the current MEI call rates. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer to approve the MEI call rate to two hundred dollars plus mileage. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg to approve natural gas connection at the city center. One fifteen North Fourteenth Street, eliminating four meters. A motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg to approve the tax abatement for nineteen thirteen two hundred and sixtieth Street. Neil and Julie Botker, a new home, motion passed unanimously at ten thirty AM. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg to open the closed session of the discussion of the Hazard Liquid Pipeline Ordinance and potential litigation for, per Iowa code, twenty-one point five subsection one subsection C. Motion passed unanimously at eleven forty-four. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due respect, the board adjourned at eleven forty-five AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, fourth of the PM proceeding, the next meeting.
Okay, do we have any changes? I mean. None, alright, very good. We will move on to report supervisors and just any.
Ma'am, would you like to sign?
I would be glad to. Craig, you are first. You've not been first for a long time.
Okay. Last Tuesday night had a West Central Community Action meeting and they had their annual reports. I'm just gonna pass that around. Take a look at that. Nothing. I guess. No big news coming out of there. They are still, they have switched their head start in Dennison to home base instead of center base. They're certainly still looking for a center. So if anybody thinks of any location that we can look at, certainly let me know. Have an early childhood meeting today at noon. And I think everybody knows that last Tuesday while I was gone was, uh, eulogized my best friend, Mr. John Vexton. And made me, of course, when you have a good friend like that, you always kind of think back of, on things that you guys did together. And John and I did a lot of stuff together. And one of the things that John had me do was twenty twenty-five years ago, probably, he said, hey Craig, have you read the book Five Thousand Year Leap? And I said, no, I haven't. And he said, you need to. And so I read that. And since that time, I've given that book out to all of my kids, all of the pastors that I've had, all the vicars that we've had, all of the DCEs that we've had in the church. And I got to thinking that, and I've given it to other prominent people in Dennison. And I got to thinking, you know, I haven't given the book out for probably away to someone for probably five years. And I'm like, I can't believe I haven't given it to my fellow Board of Supervisors. And so that's what I, if you have already read the book or you have the book, take this copy and give it to someone that you can. But the, the premise of the book is that, and this is a non-political book, but it's, the premise is that there's been five thousand, there was five thousand years of recorded history when our founders founded the United States of America. So they had five thousand years of recorded history and other governments to pick and choose and say, here's how, what we want to do because these people did that. Or we gotta make sure that we have this in our government. And it's a five thousand year leap because we did it different than anybody else, than any country ever did in the five thousand years previously. And so the book is, it's not a great read. I mean, it's hard to read the book, I thought. I mean, it's kind of more like college professor type stuff. It's just not a flowing book. But there is tons of aha moments in the book. And you'll read it, you go, ah, that's why they did it that way. Gotcha. So guys, like I said, if you've read it, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have a copy, give this copy to someone else.
Wow.
Enjoy.
Thank you. How, I will listen to it on my audio books and then I'll be able to do two things at the same.
It's cool pictures too. Awesome.
Thank you. How thoughtful. How absolutely thoughtful. I really appreciate it. Yeah, that.
Sharing the gift of knowledge.
Memories.
Some memories, right?
Yep. So, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. That's all I got.
Alright. I'm gonna take just one little second and tell you that I did talk to Alan Anderson, who's kind of been facilitating the Buier party. Then we had that issue with the cleanup and I just wanted to make sure that he was satisfied with what's happened over there in Buier. And he is. He said, it's not perfect, but we've done a good job. And he appreciates us helping see to that, that we got the right people in place to, to look things over and looking forward to their celebration. And he thought it was, and he's gonna actually come and bring us a, one of the things today to kind of help us remember what time it's gonna start and kind of how he wants to get there. I just wanted to bring that up, that, that he's grateful that we did help get the Buier cleaned up a little bit. And he's, he says it's not perfect, but it's so much better. So I just wanted to add that. Kyle, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I didn't. It's a very quiet week for me, so.
Want to yield your time?
Yeah, I'm yielding my time.
Want to yield a bit of time?
You can do whatever.
Well, not really, but.
Okay, Dave, Dave, I'll get.
I was, uh, I told you earlier, going through some files, I, grandpa's place, cause their grandma's gonna sell the underground house in Manala. And he had some.
So it's been sold?
Not yet. No, they're in the process of doing that. But looking back through some of his files, I was reading some news clippings of primary elections. And one was with Frank Louie and Eileen and, and then that Vern Cruz. And I just need to see back in history of, of, you know, how things rhyme each other, you know? We're still going through the same process today, but looking back at the different people. But I found in his file, he had a framed membership from ISAC. And it was a nineteen seventy-seven. I don't know when we first became a member of ISAC, but here it is. I don't know how he ended up with that, but I just thought it was neat. And being on that board, I sent that picture off to Bill Peterson.
Oh, sure.
He thought that was pretty neat to see that. History to go back to seventy-seven that we were members back then.
Be curious to see how that has evolved, you know, from maybe they just come in once a year, give us an update to where we actually all go there and have a lot of different seminars and three-day auction practically.
And actually the, the stuff we take away and bring home with us. But I was gonna bring that with me. My next ISAC meeting is June nineteenth and twentieth at the ISAC office and we'll go over all our audit reports and, and do that with that meeting, but.
How are they doing finding a replacement?
We hope to be updated on that. They haven't been, it's a smaller executive board that is going through legwork to narrow it down to a couple. And then when they get it down to a couple, we'll bring them in for the final interviews and bring the whole board in.
You know, when you mentioned nineteen seventy-seven, reading on some old minutes, so to nineteen seventy-nine, I think it was. But the, the Board of Supervisors had to vote to get out of Region Twelve, to leave Region Twelve. Cause Region Twelve, they said, was, there was corrupt things going on, the corrupt individuals. And so they had left. They, there was a motion passed and to leave Region Twelve. And I was, I haven't read yet to see when they got back in. But I think it was seventy-eight or seventy-nine when they had a motion to leave Region Twelve.
Just interesting how different boards have gone through things like that. I mean.
That is.
That was a busy board too. I mean, I'm actually starting to be pretty impressed with that board, you know what I mean? Some of the stuff that you think, why didn't people, you know, you thought in the past, why didn't, why hadn't something been done with this before? But a lot of times stuff goes back to this board actually had done this all.
You look at all the stop signs that are in rural Crawford County, that board did a majority. You read through the minutes and a lot of them, but it seemed like every meeting, due to a dangerous intersection, they put up stop signs.
So we're pretty lucky.
We were a busy board.
Leadership we have at Region Twelve now, you know, with Rick and Chris and just the staff that they have, I mean, phenomenal staff.
State is so.
Rick is so.
That's pretty cool, isn't it?
That's, that was neat. I began to see it through my crack, cut my bone. Just don't inhale and hold the phone.
So it was established, ISAC established my law in June of seventy-one, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
By law?
By law.
By law. But when you say it's a law, it's not required. Counties' law.
Ask Steve, I guess he's on our board.
Hey, do all ninety-nine counties belong to ISAC?
No.
And what's the law that they actually pass if it's not the law that all counties have to?
Well, they have to look up.
Probably just putting ISAC into.
Right, putting ISAC into existence.
Here we go with my one more question today.
So they have to be approved for that too.
See, we, it was kind of a long process that Christie had been working on this last couple of years of how we identify as a tax entity. Instrumentality of government is what they called it. And where does that fall in for a five oh one C three versus something else? And they've been trying to sift through to make sure that we are in compliance as a organization.
It's kind of funny how they evolve.
What, what are they listed now, ISAC? Are, are they a five oh one C third?
No, I don't, I think we are. What is it? Instrumentality of, is an instrument of government. But then it was, um, how you tax and how you, and we'll, we'll know more when we go through our auditing process again here. But this is kind of a gray area that we've been trying to.
Come, they've been audited since nineteen seventy-one and now.
You'd think the IRS would let you know what exactly you are.
Although they're listening today.
Seventy-seven certificate, probably the person, when Crawford County probably joined, it became an original.
That's what I would guess too.
I mean, it was probably established in seventy-one by, by a code. It took a few years to get everything put into place, so. So maybe by seventy-five, seventy-six, they finally had the ball rolling. Nobody had it under budget, so we had to wait till next year, so.
Yeah.
I think the question has always been, even when it got established, is can a local government, government entity use funds to lobby on their behalf? And, you know, we use them as tool for information.
Education.
Education. They do lobby on our behalf of how things affect us adversely or good, you know, if good or bad. But there's still always that underlying question, why are you using tax funds to lobby state government?
You think that's why they're a little more cautious than like a regular drug and trade association?
Probably. They want to make sure that our I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and we're, you know, everything we're supposed to. But even NACO, I mean, you can go up to the, the NACO level as well, but you're still, you know, they're lobbying on our behalf as local governments, but internationally.
But you know, the state and the federal government solicit the, the, what, what we're thinking on a, on a particular thing. I know Steve's told me multiple times when there's things that we've had conflict with them on, you know, that we wish they'd have came and asked, talked to us kind of thing. He said, well, we talked to NACO and they said, you, you know, either didn't have a position or most of the time, that's what it is, you don't, you know. So that's when they think it's okay. And I thought, well, you do know my number. But that being said, I, I think they solicit them as much as we probably.
But I, I couldn't imagine not having Jamie and Lucas at the State House, the grammar legislators, to say, hey, this is good or bad, this is how it's gonna affect us.
That's something I never miss is that email that tells, tells us what's going on down there. I mean, it gives us, they're actually more of a reconnaissance tool for us down there, what's really going on. Cause obviously we can't be there every day to see what's going on and how it's affecting our county.
How many times have we used that email and called one of our legislators and said, hey,
You bet.
I didn't realize this was going on or.
Multiple.
We've missed a few of them though, that have gone through that.
Some of them though, that didn't, I don't even know that ISAC, really. Some of them midnight meetings, I think, might have something to do with it.
You know, they, they came in, cause when you talk to Steve.
I don't think they're named to think malicious. I think like the black, the blue, all the confusion that that created. I don't think they thought it was gonna be that hard to.
And I think the other one that, that they did think all the way through was mental health. Because when I talked to Steve about that, he said he didn't really realize all the impact that was gonna be to only have forty-nine percent of the vote on the board and to change that whole dynamics, you know? Didn't know that they should have come out stronger on that.
It's like, I still think it's gonna be kind of chaotic when you try to merge all these mental health regions and the staff and directors, funds.
And not lose some of the better operating facilities they have, like staffs out here in Vale.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that, we, we were actually on that, I was in the attorney's office tomorrow, we were talking about a lot of mental health stuff and how that's basically moving closer, more to the cities and how they gotta house some people clear across the state for some programs. And there's some programs, like if you were a domestic violence case, that you gotta go clear, there's a meeting every week, you miss one and, and you can be found and condemned. And it's a, boy, it's a deal. And some people don't even have transportation, they don't remind the ability to take off work and.
And I.
Yes, some of them things get kind of, I think they get.
How bigger can ever be better? You know, when you have this big region rather than the smaller region, how that can ever be better, better for mental health? It's one I can't, can't give back, swear on my heart. But those are the things that, at least we have somebody to talk to and somebody going to the State House and pleading our cases. So what they do to us, how much do we pay them a year to give the call, uh, ISAC?
Um, I can look, cause we pay at the county, each affiliate pays.
Pressure auditor.
I would say seven to eight thousand, maybe, maybe a little more. Did anybody watch the ISAC webinar about the reorganization of mental health? It was an IC, I bet it's recorded. It's probably on their website if you go in there. It was, I started watching it and then I, some other stuff was happening, so I didn't get. I don't know for sure. I'm not sure how long it is.
A lot of the webinar.
Um, the one mental health guy. I can't think of his name. I've seen him before at ISAC though. He's with a county, with a region. Um, I can't think of his name. He was on there.
From Washington, Jack. Who's named Jack?
Jack Stewart?
Yeah.
No, I don't think it is Jack. Gosh, I can't think of his name. Anyway. It was, it started off really good and it's kind of interesting because they're not eliminating the regions.
They said that?
Yep, he said that.
Weren't they gonna slow them down or they're?
They won't be funded. So they won't be funded, but they can, they can.
Operate within the region?
Apply. Cause they're going through like thirteen. You gotta watch it. You gotta watch it. It was kind of interesting.
So was this webinar?
It was an ISAC webinar. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, the reason it was out there is to say they've changed their lines again, kind of a deal?
No, I think it was just to give some clarity to some of the decisions that have been made. And there's like a, a draft map out there too.
Seen that.
But it's a draft. It's not set in stone yet, um, what those regions are gonna look like. Anyway. It was starting off really good. I wish I would have been able to keep watching it.
Was the director, Garcia?
No, I don't believe, I don't think. No.
Interesting.
Yeah. Good info on there. So if you find the time or whatever.
I will.
Go along. Yeah.
We did not have an advisory board meeting last month because there wasn't a big agenda and a lot of people had conflicts, so did not have one. Always a lot.
Oh, interesting.
I'll zoom in.
Do they say, like, the region's current fund amounts, how that's gonna be handled? No. Like, does the state? At least the part I heard. Cause I'm curious, like, does the state come in and just swipe every single region's funds? I don't know. And give it back out to the sixth? I don't know. You know, I know.
Idea.
The part I heard didn't talk, he didn't get into that, so.
Yeah. David, Kyle?
Um, all I had last week was Central Iowa Juvenile Detention and, uh, yeah, you're snackered.
Sorry.
It was a, uh, I don't even know how to describe it.
Do your best, Tom.
Well, I can't even talk about it. A bunch of it. It was closed session stuff, wazoo and there was a complaint filed. I, you know, I don't even know where I can or should go into that. I guess all I can say is that, uh,
I don't think.
Tony was gonna get counsel and go over this. They're, I think we're gonna get Taylor and Cooney. Do I say that in the right order? Come use an A or A or?
Said it right the first time.
And, uh, they're gonna retain them to, to look into the matter and get things solved there. So that was, and wow, you talk about too many cooks bowl to bro. There were three closed sessions to address that one issue. Well, there were separate parts of it, but it was a deal. Anyway, uh, and I'll, I'll just, when I find out more that we can actually talk about out of closed session, I'll, I'll fill you in. I don't think the house is gonna burn down, might you, but, um, then the other thing was we talked, we did the budget stuff. And I, I was, I was, well, I just took this and just, just held it up. Pants are snow for me. How do, now like your longevity, uh, we don't, we don't count that into the, like, the four and a half percent. You get longevity.
Longevity.
Well, but I'm saying people that do get longevity.
Right, no.
We, we don't, but.
It's not part of their base.
But, and, and I'm sitting here thinking, that ain't how we do it. And that ain't, I just don't like that at all. Like, if cost of living goes up, we figure that into the four and a half percent. Right? And, and I'm sitting here just frustrated. They had almost five percent before they ever talked about the pay raise for their, because of like COLA.
Cost of living in.
Yeah, and I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember what the other thing they listed. But there was almost like a five percent pay raise and we haven't got to look back that they're giving a four and a half percent. Which a four and a half I could get along with. That's what we went for, for public official, anyone, which ended up follow suit for the most. At least on this floor. But, uh,
I thought, I thought we got rid of that. The, um.
It was a dollar amount? Elected officials?
Well, it was a dollar amount, but that was how it translated, was to about a four and a half. That's why I said about, somewhere. Yeah. So it was, I mean, I'm just.
Tenure pay or whatever. I thought we got, I thought we got rid of that.
Yeah, this is over at a Central Iowa Juvenile Detention.
Oh, okay. But here at the local county level.
I'm just trying to compare it to what we do and that's.
Or length of time pay or tenure paid or whatever. I thought some Amy came in one time and we got rid of that.
Not longevity.
The longevity, that's it. Yeah. Would you, would you get rid of that?
I mean, some of us don't get it.
They changed how my office was gonna get it computed, is kind of my understanding, you know, I said it.
Some of them do it. I don't.
Okay.
Well, but anyway, I was, when we did do that, if we did, I, I didn't.
Don't think so.
Those that did, I should say. I, I just, uh, I thought, I thought, I think that was outside of the normal boundaries of the raise, but everything else was within what we offered for a raise. I mean, I've sat on boards with you or sat on the hiring or the negotiation board with you and Gene. I, I don't know that we've ever negotiated anything where we had all these separate things out there. And so, I mean, I said, you guys aren't giving enough, you can't call that a four and a half percent rate. I'm sorry. That's, that's just, that's backdoor money and I'm, no, I'm a no. I just voted no on everything, every raise they had. I mean, I was just so damn upset. That, uh, and I just couldn't believe that. And then I, I, I asked a couple commissioners, I said, supervisors, do you guys do it like that? Well, yeah, something like that. God, no wonder you guys' budgets are so damn high, you know? But, uh, I just couldn't believe that. I mean, I just seemed like it just, what do you tell them, the taxpayers? You know, we gave a four and a half percent raise this year and just neglect to tell them about the COLA and all that stuff? Cause that's, I just.
What was the reasoning? Did they think they were?
Well, that's just not.
Underpaid or?
Well, everybody thinks they're underpaid, don't they?
Everybody.
That's just automatic, that first five percent, just automatic.
Well, and I, and I, and I'm just giving you a roundabout number there. But yeah, that's the automatic pay raise every year, I guess, you know? It's just, it just kind of blew my mind there's such a thing. So I wasn't very happy at that and I, I'm not done complaining about it, but I don't know what I do. I'm one out of thirty-four, you know? I mean, but I can be against it. I guarantee you that, cause I was, I was upset.
Are our rates gonna go up because of these raises?
No, well, no. Yes, I mean, it's, we don't, it's bed days that we pay for, you know? But with all the other stuff that he does, you know, I mean, they, they get more income from non-juvenile detention, things that they do.
So if thirty-day evals could go up, just from a thousand to two thousand, just, just throwing numbers out there. I'm not, I don't know what they are, but he could, he could sock them higher or drug screening and stuff, could sock those higher.
Yeah. See, that's, and so are the financial agent stuff.
But it's gotta come from, money's gotta come from somewhere.
Exactly.
So.
So I mean, how much will it affect ours? Well, I didn't see a breakdown on that, but I know I was just.
We send no kids there. It won't affect us.
Right, and we don't send many.
So.
No, we don't send many at all anymore. Yeah, we don't send many at all anymore. I mean, there's, Nate says that they're, they're, they're cost effective in certain, in certain instances. Which aren't very frequent. So in any event, that was the big news I'm bringing home from them, as I was. Bucky about that.
Still cast.
Oh, overwhelming. I just, and that's why I said, I, I mentioned them counties must operate like that. I mean, otherwise I can't imagine why they'd even think they could start something like that. Maybe we're old fashioned here, I don't know.
What is?
Stay with old fashioned.
What is typical salary for counselor or a staff?
Oh, shoot, I don't have all that with me.
What's Tony's? Do you know?
Yeah, no, you don't wanna know.
I do.
It's, I.
You're like what?
Six one?
Yeah, you're six digits in it.
Yeah.
It's over.
Not counting benefits.
Yeah, not counting benefits, yeah. But the uh. And I don't wanna spout out a number without having the documents in front of me that say this and this and this and that.
This is gonna be before the rate?
The governor makes a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, I think Tony outearns her. But in any event, I, I, you know, that was one of the things was I thought. And, and I do know that they went through a time where they were having a lot of trouble hiring and, and. You know, it's just like with public health, well, to get nurses, it costs so much, you know, and, and that's basically what they throw out there. But everybody's got their excuse why they aren't paid enough, you know, I mean, it's, a lot of times it's legitimate. You know, but uh. I don't know, you know, I mean, some of the things I see like that, the new, the new wing that they built there, you know, how that handles with the kids and it's so much. You know, less stressful for the staff and actually the kids, you know, I mean, they can separate them easier and that to me was the, oh. A good benefit, you know, I, you know, that was a cost, if you did a cost analysis, you know, what has it given you for what you spent, I think that's, but. I think that was a good system, right? A good thing to put it. I don't know, he talks about wanting to put this solar field in where there's some ground that they won't use for anything, just, you know, without a lot of dollars worth of. Upgrade, I suppose you wouldn't even build over there if you ever expanded it again. But, and he was giving you the typical solar field, you know, thing about why it would save money in the long run and I can't say that he's not wrong. Or that he's not right, I should say. So I mean, that may be a. Something you wanna do to help cost, especially it's something that's got electricity on all the time, you know, I mean, it's not like it's ever got down. Low downtime, cause you always got people in the facility, so. But uh, I don't know, I just, that pay raise thing bothered me and, and so I just couldn't vote for it, so if you guys thought I should have, I'm sorry.
Yep, you were channeling.
I mean, no votes further.
You know? Maybe nine or ten.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So there was, there was some other people that thought like I did, cause I asked them questions. I think, I don't know if that made, if they were on already thinking that, or if that made a few guys go, wait a minute.
So how many are on that full board then?
I think, I think there's thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay.
Think so. Don't quote me exactly, but I think it's thirty-four. There's a lot, and they're great people, great commissioners, I mean, they are. Supervised, I mean, they, they really are a lot of sharp people and I, Anne McDonough, she's a retired attorney and she's one of the supervisors over in Dubuque. I listened to that lady, I just, wow, she's sharp as a tag, you know, I really enjoyed her comments. And Latifah at Story City, in Story County, she's, she's also. And Kyle Stecker, you know, I mean, for being a young guy, he's a pretty sharp character, you know, and he is. What's that?
Latifah Fasil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good people on that board, you know, Lance, that's actually there. He actually came because of the. Closed sessions, he is his county attorney, which he's there, you know, hard. His county attorney came there just to, you know, make sure that he wasn't compromised, you know, cause obviously anything that goes on there. For the big lawsuit, they could come back on all of our counties, cause we're all member counties, you know, we talked about that a week or two ago, you know, where the money's, how that's financed. So, I mean, I don't think that.
That's our, that's our true skin in the game.
Yeah.
If anything happens bad, they come back on us by being a member.
And I, and I don't know that there's.
I don't know what that's for.
I don't know that there's anything that we gotta panic about here, I mean, I don't believe that they're in split one. But uh, you know, it's, it, it, it kinda brings all them points to life, you know, when you, you have some, an issue pop up, you know, you know. And then the salary stuff, yeah, that could affect our cost, cost of. That was, that was the only. Meeting that I had of substance, like my meeting for ag committee. Uh, Naco Ag, steering, steering committee. That's, I got moved to this afternoon, I got, they're usually on Mondays, now it's today, so.
But you know, talk about juvenile detention. Remember back, and here's a goal, and I think we had to give the S Center like. Twenty-five or fifty thousand.
Your dad was probably involved in that, yeah, cause they.
Keep them afloat.
Their director was. Had some wrongdoers with some funds and each county had to chip in twenty, they had to keep it fit.
The twenty, I think it's around that, just, so we're kind of invested in the S Center, hate to. Not, I mean, forget that because.
Yeah. Excellent.
Well, it does happen.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think uh, as far as.
He would, he was probably on at that time.
I think so, on, so he would. He would know.
It's kinda one of those things, you got, you're going, you need a place to go.
And this was, I mean, this is kinda, this is open knowledge, so I mean, it was an HR complaint that was, that's caused the closed sessions, I mean.
Yep.
To me, it's something that should be able to be remedied, but. You know, when you got all that. I, I keep saying the too many cooks thing, but when you got that, you know, everybody's, well, should we all have a lawyer, do we, you know? Should we all get our county attorney involved or? No, absolutely not. It's hard enough to have that many supervisors sitting at a table, get a bunch of attorneys in there too, we'd really have a mess. So that's why they decided to go ahead and hire. Taylor and Cooney, cause it's an HR, so I think it's. Well, they said, mentioned a, a young lady, they, it wasn't, it wasn't ours, you know. Yeah, you know what I mean.
The only question I have now, that, should, the whole state funding reimbursement for juvenile detention, so. The way it per, presently sets, they're trying to get that changed, if any new construction comes off, so there's two million dollars. Tony wants to put a solar field in, is that coming from the state reimbursement?
Good question.
Or is that, or is that coming out of profits? Yeah, there's no really cost to.
Well, they do have profit, I mean, it's usually a tricky thing narrow, I mean, but I suspect you're, you wanna be in the.
That's one of the biggest complaints right now is with a lot of their directors is. You know, I think it's sort of Lynn County building a new facility and that money comes off the top before the.
Before you spread it out.
Before it gets spread out, but.
Yeah, so not, I don't, I, you know, I know Tony's against doing it that way, I think he wants to just get paid by the bed days.
Okay.
Kinda like, I, I think that's, you're, you're, you're the, yeah, center and him are on the same wavelength on that stuff.
Okay. Which would be a first time.
Well, yeah, they aren't always on, Tony has, Tony's one of them. Full of moving hype and sometimes he's aggressive about it, so he has some friends in the juvenile detention. But, yeah, that's. I don't, I think he, he meant to build that on, on what they're.
And that's not, about, yes. Very, is all you know, solar and a jam, whatever, it's. It obviously works and longevity of it.
And there was actually, like I said, it's good to sit with his board, cause every question under the sun came back at him, you know, about. Well, what happens in the twenty-second year and the twenty-fifth year when you're only at eighty percent or seventy percent of production and. And yeah, they were hitting him with everything, you know, and he had some good answers, I think, you know, but he's, he's got. I think he must have his own either commercial or private properties that he's, you know, got stuff on, so he's already got some solar, so he could speak from experience with. So, in any event. That is pretty much the justice of juvenile detention, I mean, I didn't bring in the pack. But uh, that's pretty much the same.
We could do a cease and desist way and take a break if we wanted to. If anybody needs a break, we haven't had one for three and a half years.
Break this down.
I'm just saying, I used to remember the break, so. Uh, for those.
I've been practicing brevity, and it's actually in my speech for Memorial Day yesterday, I started. I know that brevity is our friend, but it's an ever elusive companion.
Act like labor kid coming.
Was that what we think?
Starts spreading, and he's like. I says, no, that's too many, I got me.
For the rest of the day. Now, it is settled for.
Pad a letter back to him, the.
Thirty percent off.
Oh my goodness.
It's through the letter, you can see, they called the same person.
No, is he the one that we had that big bill on?
Well, it's uh, twenty or fifteen.
This is St. Anthony's.
Yeah, it's in today's claims.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the one.
Fifteen thousand.
See, that's, to me, you gotta wonder about all that, don't you? Cause he seems like a pretty sharp guy, he might actually be aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
I mean, as well, that, that's what was well written, I don't.
It was.
Yeah.
Well, here's the bill.
I can imagine, there's a lot of guys sitting in a jailhouse with a thesaurus and.
Here's, here's the uh.
Well, they gave him his phone, taxpayers of Crawford County paid him out.
Yeah.
There it is, you know?
So if you question.
And he's.
If you don't like it, don't like the food, don't.
Yes, I did. I did.
You don't like.
I do.
By having your phone, whatever, you don't have, don't get put in jail.
What's crazy though, you go to state. Federal prison. All of a sudden uh. Medicare kicks back in.
Yeah.
But at a county level.
But they're talking about that in. Or one of the unbundled mandates that uh.
Did you? Prisoner that gets out of a state facility, they are on insurance for up to a year after that, yeah.
No, I did not know that.
Huh?
I did not know that.
Yeah, they get insurance for.
Medicaid, ain't it?
Why? Why would they do that and not take care of anybody in a county facility that just ended up there? I mean.
Well, quite a lot of times they aren't even in court trade, having on through trial, so.
Yeah, yeah, they just take away, i- in, in the case if they had Medicaid, they took that away from them while they're waiting.
So if they were on Medicaid and they got arrested.
Correct.
Then they would fall off of Medicaid while they're in.
That's got something to do with the stream that's behind.
There, there is a uh. In ISAC. Think that they're gonna talk.
Thanks.
And the mandates that we have.
All the way.
They continue to.
Yeah, I just figured I'd drop by uh. I do, I'd rather hang out here than.
Hang out?
Yeah, I'd be sitting at my house, uh, at the, the office, so it works out pretty good.
Well, you know what, lying don't look good on you.
Well, it's a beautiful day otherwise, but uh, yeah, and I wasn't sure, I, I'm sure we threw in a packet at one point, but I just wanted to swing it. Unfortunately, I only had enough paper to print off one, but might be a helpful tool going into talks for soil restoration, but our agricultural impact mitigation plan. It has been filed and approved and uh, adopted by the I U B, um, and uh, there's quite a bit of material in there.
Do you know if, if like the study that we had done at Iowa State, that part of. Do you use that to help the crap here? Cause I, obviously the bosses welcome that at Iowa State.
Yeah, I think.
And that was our reason we did it, we wanted you, we wanted to be able to work with you.
Yes, exactly, and I think one of the main things that came out of that.
It's your first breaks in three and a half years.
County hired ag inspector. Has soft work authority, if the weather's bad, if, if it's a little, a certain moisture, I don't think they've ever had soft work authority. With like that one, some of the other big projects, they can, they can shut us down, um, and stop work. And uh, so I think that's mainly the big thing, I think they'll use some of the, some of the knowledge learned from that Iowa State study to determine. When to stop work, so.
Good.
But uh, yeah, but this could be a helpful tool and it goes into pretty good depth for like even all the way to Harrison, Grand Isle, um. Running, um, all the way, uh, dewwatering trench, if, if it gets water in the trench, uh, so there's. A lot of helpful information, unfortunately, I, I can only print off one, uh, but I'll email y'all a, a, a fresh copy of it too. So, um, just maybe a helpful tool and I think that's something, you know, we wanna be good stewards of the land anyways, so. I think it's something we could definitely back some ideas off.
Certainly something we wanna get control.
How many pages is that? Did you say?
Oh, let's see, besides the table of contents, it's probably.
Just curious, so what?
It's gotta be in the twenties, uh, there's some drawings too as well for like temporary permanent drain tower repairs, uh, that kinda help give a visual, um. This will basically be sitting with your county hired ag inspector as well, who will be beholden to this, uh.
Didn't get back to you.
This document as well.
Oh, that's all right.
I would say Iowa was probably the, the best state brag. Maybe the entire United States when it comes to. State power, make sure people are. Very important agricultural areas. The county can hire a.
They make federal.
An ag inspector, uh, especially with soft work authority and then the.
Not necessarily meet our hand.
Heard one, they won't be afraid to tell.
I'm sure by the. Calls to communicate.
Oh, he's just. He'll be very. He won't.
Yeah, and I think.
He's like that and everything.
I think this would be a great job.
Amy's been working with, the department. Well. It's a visiting employee, but has been switching positions or whatever, so.
Um, sometime tonight.
Coming on to our insurance instead of.
Hopefully it uh, it helps, but it's a, it's a good reading material nonetheless.
Switching position, yeah.
How was uh, charter of breakfast yesterday?
It was good, yeah.
Pancakes?
Sausage was really good, the patties?
Yeah, I guess, cause Brooke was serving them.
Boy, they were good. I knew, just something, something about them is.
I come through lying, he's got a. I said, I don't like sausage. I'll take a sausage.
Angry sausage tastes better than happy sausage?
Everything was good, it's uh, it's funny.
And they had the eggs, and then they had a big pan of mushroom, or excuse me, peppers and onions on the side, so you could add them if you wanted to.
Uh, there's a nice, like raising the courthouse in Dennis and it's really well ended and. Always nice, good food. I think there were. But uh, when they do the quilts, that's really a.
Yeah. I mean, did, did they hand out about ten of them?
About, yeah, yeah, twenty-eight veterans have passed away since last Memorial Day that.
Oh, wow.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, you heard him read them off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's hard to hear over here, we're doing the food and stuff, the.
They read those names off and it's like, oh yeah, oh yeah, you know, it's like. Twenty-eight.
It was good.
Forget what the number of World War Two vets a day pass, I don't know, it's, it's an astonishing nationwide, it's a.
All about.
Yeah, I'm sure it started to drop off, they just didn't make it last.
For. Something I'm guessing we got last week, when I was in here, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, one thing, the, well, that was right up West Central Community Action, they actually.
Last eighty years.
Asolate that Department of Homeland Security application, you can go to the West Central Community Action Office and. Down and apply for the Homeland Security, that five thousand dollars and, and Wendy, the director said that they are a. Pain to work with and that their contract is up in June of twenty twenty five and West Central Community Action cannot wait to get out of that.
Wow, that's too bad.
Yeah.
I mean, too bad that they're difficult to work with.
And uh, she decided that West Central Community Action is not a disaster relief organization and we regret having. Partnered with uh Homeland Security.
Look, I have a person over in Aryan who their house is absolutely being flooded by muddy water. I guess the uh farmer up above is taking out some trees, which is caused, and she sent me a video and uh, there's just. Anybody got any ideas where I, can you go with that one?
Does the NRCS help with?
That would might be NRCS type thing. I know that. I don't know that person, but it's, it's a sticky situation because. There's so many pieces to that puzzle. The farming, the whole farming thing has changed. It was pasture and trees. Now it's all crop ground. And the water drains through into our county ditch, but to get out of county ditch, it's gotta go through under and through the railroad to the Booyah River. So. The railroad. Had a large track now. So it's, that's, it's a whole big picture of multiple agencies. That would have to come together and serve that. I've seen this done once in my. Twenty years of going with the county that got the U P to.
Worked with you?
Worked with it. It's must be full again due to the holy rosers, so.
Sounds like them trees getting taken out and all that's really.
Made a mess.
Right.
Sorry.
Which it does.
Took a buffer.
I thought hopefully if the, the city of Aryan, their match landlord can give a, give their agreement and either establish a buffer strips or just there's something of that nature. But I think a landlord also is.
Yeah.
I think that landlord would be a nice enough person and he will see that and yeah. At that fault, they, also. Being hopeful about it.
The mercy thing.
I'm figuring.
Ow.
Got the bud.
Ow.
Got the bud deal.
That's the idea. That mud over an area in that house that gets like, streets reached out to me at several times. Uh, got any ideas?
Huh? I'm starting to think.
Gotta catch the water up there in the field, so now you gotta get it before you.
Gotta get slowed down.
Yeah.
Once, once you said, we're gonna have a mess when it starts to rain. It's like after you said that, it just started raining.
So Mr. Nosterdom is worth. Well, yeah.
It's inevitable. You knew that was gonna happen.
It, it is, yeah. And we've had, had all sorts of things, you know, and some of you have shared with and dealt with and other areas, you know, and. Um. We just haven't had rains like this for a long time. And so it's kind of a, a little bit of a, a little bit of a sample of what can happen. Uh, you know, throughout the time that I've been here, uh, you know, and certainly ninety three, which most of us remember that. Uh, it was devastating, you know, and so this is just a sample of what should happen.
You know, it ain't been that long since we had that four to five inch range, so you think the memory wouldn't have evaporated that quick.
Well, I remember in twenty thirteen, the spring of twenty thirteen, I think it was in April, that bridge, uh, it's now Box Colvert by, I think it's a coolman lives.
On and down. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just, just east of his place.
Yep.
Uh, sitting at that trust bridge and I mean, it, they, they had no till that entire field to the north. It just planted it and it rained, I don't know, six or seven inches that night and it completely, the cornstalks completely filled that opening bridge. Now this is a bridge opening. And I, I mean, I was sitting there.
Remember that.
Doing traffic control until we got some signs up, uh, but it just gutted the field and took it all down the stream and uh, you know, so. It's what mother nature lets the snow who's in charge if he wants to.
Is there anything, you know, cause it never happened before. They've had that house for like seven years and it hasn't ever done that before. We've had rains. But it, she thinks it's because they took the trees out.
The U P don't allow that ditch under the tracks cleaned up. Put it back along and it's all hollow to get away, so then it backs up.
Yeah.
And I said, I think.
We players.
Since you've been here and at my time, I.
The tree thing is probably an issue.
Get some traction with U P one time and had it cleaned from the river.
Probably, yeah, I'm sure. Well, there's a couple of different drainage bases that come down there. There's one that comes off of North or Tower Lane. I think it's what's called North Lane, North Lane. Um, but anyhow, um, and we did, we're getting that all cleaned out and we kinda clean out a little bit going uh to the south of the road there. Uh, yeah, you gotta get through the railroad and then they cleaned all the way to the river at one time. It was not too long ago.
I would say I remember that.
So that's that drainage base there and then they have this other one a little farther to the west, which is the one that's causing problems here now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're two different.
Okay.
Kind of a little different areas, uh, but then it might all have to eventually get over to the east Colvert. I, I don't know if there's anyone.
Still regardless, no matter one side of how it went on, they'll still have to go under the U P line somewhere.
It's gonna have to go under the railroads, both U P and the.
C N.
C N Canadian Nationals now.
To get all of them to work together. And I agree on that.
I don't know, I have no experience with them.
Oh, that question kind of is. Yeah, I forgot, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, for these individuals are being impacted every time it rains even a half of an inch, is there any resolve to it, anything that, any place somebody can guide them?
Honestly, I, I suggest to go to the NRCS. Uh, because the NRCS deals with agricultural operations and trying to address runoff, you know, their neighboring properties. I think that's probably the best place to go.
Have you talked to me and gave him that advice?
Yeah, I told him. I told Danny, I, I met with Danny tonight, who's the mayor.
Yeah.
Right after that morning, six thirty, I sat down and met with him. Yeah, I said.
President to go.
And I said, go, go talk to the NRCS because.
President's really, I told him.
You guys that are involved in Ag, no, I mean, that's, that's kinda where it has to probably start, you know, in my opinion, so.
Okay.
But. Just, and hopefully they can all work together.
Yeah, dip on that. Yeah, broach to it and.
Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah. So sometimes it's frustrating. You'd like to go over and help.
Well, they cleaned it up once and then you have it again. That was the part of the problem. It wasn't that drain that second time.
Yeah, you know, you're, you feel sorry for them.
You do.
But I. Not really much on, you know, our department if we can do the help, other than just give them some advice on where to go, so um. But.
Nothing short of. I don't know what even hypothetically, if the county had drainage districts, would that address that stuff or?
Um.
It's more like rivers.
You know, it might, but. Uh. We don't have them.
No. Hypothetically, if we had them, I don't even know that one.
Just.
Or hope.
My.
I'm gonna go that with.
Plenty of fun.
Yeah.
I'm happy.
This is more of an upland than it is a, pardon.
Do most counties have drainage districts or?
Uh, when you, you know, when, when you're up in the, the, the areas where people really get concerned about where the water goes. The river bottoms in north central Iowa where it's flat, uh, they all have drainage districts, okay, because everybody is concerned about. Where the water goes, where it comes from and where it goes to. And so, um. You know, here, there was a drainage district on the Booyah River at one time and they abandoned it because he drainage districts operate where they're, you know. The people closest to the river probably get the most benefit, but then they do assessments. So everybody, every drop of rain that drains into that. From that basin into that stream, they all get assessed.
Well, except.
And the assessment.
Right? They might be taxed.
They levy a drainage assessment onto those properties. So if you're that upland landowner, okay, you're not having many issues. You don't really wanna pay to protect, you know, you know, there could be, I mean, but uh, but that's what happens. Is that you assess, they're, they're assessed and so I don't know the history. Behind why it was abandoned, but the drainage district was abandoned and so, you know, but that would have worked. If you, if you take a look at the Booyah River. In Harrison County and you take a look at the Booyah River between Dunlop and Dennison, they're completely different.
Right.
You know, that one is controlled levy, everything is, you know, the, cause it's in a drainage district and they pay to have that happen.
Yep.
Uh, up here, it's the wild, wild west. That's part.
The Booyah River.
Yeah. The straightening is what's caused a lot of the issues. I mean, the Missouri River was straightened and then that all. Uh, brings it out through all of the tributaries, so.
A bad example of a drainage district, Humboldt County, no person owns some land up there. In the city of Humboldt, they built in the housing development in one of the lower areas and now the farmers upstream are getting taxed. Like seven thousand dollars a year to protect some houses that are in the flood plain.
I'd.
That would be a burden. It has. So I mean, that's, that's. The good, the bad and the ugly about drainage districts.
Remember when I came back from the dislaid thing, there was up in Kasuth, they were having, they're having a lot of issue with fishing wildlife and national. That they aren't paying their share at all on. On that, so they uh, yeah. So you gotta bet somebody else doesn't have to compensate for the cost of that. So they said it's a tax and the federal government doesn't pay a tax.
That's true. Yeah, so anyway, that's one of the things we're to make go and work on.
Yeah, but yeah, I don't know. I think we have, you know, down there is an isolated case where you just, the, the players all need to kind of work together hopefully and you get, you know, some assistance, maybe get the NRCS involved and they're the ones that deal with upland drainage.
Do you get the impression that uh, the mayor is taking care of, is he gonna facilitate that or who's gonna lead? I think the landlord.
I would think. Uh, you know, I, I, I would hope that maybe he would, you know, be involved, you know, the citizens out, cause it's more than just one person, you know, streets, so. We're gonna go down and help clean out a ditch. Um, you know, a couple of their, their ditches to help, you know, with some drainage and if that's something they could, you know, I always tell these small towns, you know, you can hire private contractor to do what we do. We're willing to help you, you know, we'll, we'll help the small towns, but then we do bill them for it, so um, but.
Probably a more cost effective bill, well.
Yeah, we're maybe a little, you know, that's stuff we do all the time, so um. But we'll help them with that, so.
Well, thank you for that.
You bet.
Great.
Yep.
Brought that up.
Couple of permits, this is one we talked about a few weeks back. So. What's happened here is D M U is, is agreed to take ownership of the board portion that goes underneath of Yellow Smoke Park Road, so they're gonna do an eight inch sanitary sewer with a twelve inch casing. And that'll be D M U. This is the best outcome they could have right here. They go to a manhole on the east side and then on the east side Larry digs that up and then goes up to his housing. Issue there and so, so we have two, two permits, one for the utilities crossing the road and the other one for that little short section of about a hundred and forty feet that will still be on a right of way, that'll be owned by Larry. So um, so these, there's four copies of each here.
And they'll do a bore?
Yeah, yep, that'll be bored in the east, so. Uh. Well, that we have. And then the other good news is Dixon, I talked to Seth last week, it looks like they're gonna try to start the seventeenth. Possibly the tenth of, they can get things worked out. Uh, June. So.
How long will that take?
Uh. Under normal conditions, this, they, they're a really good contract, good contractor. Normal conditions, probably that three to four month timeframe, you know, so if they get started now. They could be done, you know, to the end of September.
Weather depending.
Yeah, weather depending.
Yeah.
But you'd like to think, I mean, the fifteen inches or so or whatever we've had here in the last four weeks, we might be caught up, you know, but. Um.
I'm not gonna argue with her. She'll do what she wants.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, we need the, we, we, you know, moisture's good. It, it, no complaints. They're just, it's slow, it's slowed a lot of construction. In a lot of areas, so.
True, true.
Um. So that's good news. Um, made a shop, they're, got the doors all in, working on the electrical heating, plumbing and stuff now, so uh, they're on track, you know. We want a July first completion date, so they're, they'll get it done, but it won't be too far off from that. Um, so things. A great crew, uh, changed up another mile last week. We turned the corner and they're, they're right there. They're just going north on three hundred sixtieth street and. Uh, you know, continue to, to work on that.
Same.
Um, the temporary bridge, uh, everything's kind of falling into place on that. Um. Probably be setting the center sections, the first ones next week.
Okay.
Cool, so. Uh, we're having to, you know, bring a crane in, uh, so we're gonna have Barnhart come in for that. So we're, you know, need a few specialized things here. And we're gonna rent a J L G to get the guys underneath because the deck is already on the bridge. So you can't work anything for it. You gotta get underneath. We're gonna have one of those out there to get underneath of it. Um, but, you know, cross my fingers, hoping that it all goes together really well. I see no reason why it shouldn't, but uh. Um, if you're looking, you know where that's at, Craig? The, the temporary bridge, uh, so you go north on three eighty of here. That's right.
Right about there.
Yeah, that stream shows it up there, but it's actually right about when we turn. So it's right back here, so.
Three more copies.
So you know, next Tuesday, if you wanna take a look, I don't know if they'll be setting it next Tuesday, but uh, just uh. Maybe go over there and take a look.
It's probably raining anyway.
But it's raining, we won't be setting, we won't be setting.
After Thursday, it's like raining for the next six days.
Yeah, supposed to rain quite a bit, but.
Told you, I'm not arguing with her.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so let's see, ten o'clock, ten oh five, or that's just the notice, I guess. Yeah, I reset my notice. Yeah. And for Dean, he's on a fishing trip with his boys. They got it this for Christmas. He calls me, he just called.
Oh, God.
I said, Dean, what are you doing? I just wanna make sure everything's going all right. You gotta love it.
That's a man invested in his employment.
It's just, yeah, yeah, good.
Even must be.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, we uh, we mowed and then uh, we uh, gonna seed here probably for, well, probably till it rains. And then we'll probably be done.
Thursday.
So. So, yeah, we're gonna seed in the avenue, the one that we just got done grading and the guys haven't really done a whole lot of ditching. Just keep raining, you know, and being on rock, cleaning trees up. The roads actually, I think, look pretty darn good. They could use some gravel in some spots, but I think they look pretty good. So uh, item four, uh, this said notice of public hearing, this is for the consideration to change, reclassify that short section at K Avenue from a level C to a level B, which would just basically take the gates up a bit.
Okay.
And I talked to both Casey and I talked to Renee, who lives on the end there and I said, you get together and talk.
Yeah.
Y'all get together and talk. Okay. So you can have the discussion before you get here.
Done.
And I think everybody can get along.
All right.
This is just for a notice here.
This is a notice, this is to publish the notice and set the date for the public hearing. So I have a date at ten A M, June twenty fifth, uh, at uh. Ten o'clock. That's okay, or if that works.
Yep. Gives us plenty of time to publish.
I'll make the motion, you need to.
I provide them for, for June twenty fifth at ten A M.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? As I call vote, all favor, aye.
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 Opposing side, chair votes aye, so about that, now, public, public hearing, June twenty fifth at.
I'd be down a little brother. Right.
From this intersection. To the east.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a gentleman building new house back there and wants to.
If you wanna drive out there sometime, take a look at it, pick you up there.
It's gated, curbed away.
Here it is right here, if you wanna look at this.
Oh, there's the.
I brought that one last.
No, that's, that's actually, that was for the railway vacation.
Oh.
I don't have a, an aerial, if I can get you one, yeah. You just go, you go north of uh, of my place there, where, where you're turning, go left to the highway, turn and go right up.
Partially see the road here.
Yeah.
It's on this little end section. So this road.
Renee lives on the top of the hill and Dean's on the other side of the road, both of them are right at the top of the hill, Dean already said, yeah.
But you email that to us?
Yeah. Gravel haul started, we had twenty five trucks, I don't think we ever started with twenty five trucks. And we got, we could get more, there's just, everybody's looking for some more. Yeah, remember the days when we had six, and it was in the middle of September, and we were trying to figure out how we were gonna get twenty thousand.
Over the year was still, it was pushing Thanksgiving and you're still trying to get gravel haul done.
Yeah. This has been, this has been a good change, yeah, even though we're paying a little bit more for the material, we're getting it delivered, getting it done when we need to, so that's been. It's a really, really good change.
Five day per day with the gravel.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, and uh, item seven, the disaster declaration, so. Uh, you know, we got a call on Friday afternoon, said, hey, what do you got, I told him, well, I'm just throwing a number of thirty thousand. Um, and then Monday they called, said, you know, they, Vanilla had some damage too, which qualified Crawford County. For a disaster declaration, so.
They file separate from you, though.
Yeah, well, all separate entities, you know, but I mean, it goes under the umbrella of the declaration, so. So anyhow, it rained that Monday night, by Tuesday, at the end of the day, I'd have a number, kind of a little more legitimate number than a. See the pants, and so the guys came in, it rained, and they sat down, marked every place where they had dumped loads, you know, as best they could recall. And the debris, we only came up with eighty three thousand nine hundred forty three dollars, so. Actually, eight, actually eighty six thousand eight hundred sixty, cause we had some debris.
That's what you submitted.
This is what I submitted, yeah, eighty six thousand eight hundred sixty, so, kudos to the guys. You know, cause they all sat down that morning and they all worked it up and put it in a spreadsheet, sent it off to them by the end of the day.
Good, good job.
Yep, so.
What do they think it'll eventually do with all the trees from the Mr. Bottom Cemetery that, that all kind of stored?
They burned, they burned a lot of those.
Okay.
At, at the cemetery, they had a hole there, they burned a lot of those.
So all the trees that are at, where we stored gravel there by Vanilla, are those from the cemetery or?
Some, some are, they, you know, and some of that ended up on the west side of the road, you know, in the ditch. They all been down there.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And they burned right there, then?
Okay, that'll be our plan, right, yeah, so.
It's either pine tree started, there's a lot of pine to burn.
Yeah, be a forest fire. Well, I have one, I've talked to y'all, so y'all know that this is coming, so. Uh, anyhow, it's uh. Been a good run. Yeah, my, my intent is to make the transition as smoothly as possible, and I hope, you know, whatever, we can. We can make that happen, and so I've been.
What do you think the process should be as far as getting started?
Well, uh, you know, I just printed this out, Woodbury County's got an ad out, they've been, you know, they've been working on this for a few months, that's why. You know, I wanted to get this to you early enough, and things have changed, the Hurricanee's meeting is until June now. There was untimely death of uh, one of the uh, office staff down there.
So there's no meeting, May thirty first?
There's still a meeting, May thirty first now, the meeting's been switched to June twenty eighth, and, and so. So it kinda changed things on, on that, yeah, but it's like, okay, we're, we're moving forward here. Um, but yeah, unfortunately, one of the, one of the staff's husband uh, passed away in the funeral on Friday, so. So that's been changed, uh, but uh, but anyhow, uh. So, so the process, I think, you know, you, you can try, and I've been involved in a couple of them in other counties. Um, one in Carroll County, they, they just uh, hooked the ad out, they got, got applications, they did the interviews, I actually went over and helped with those interviews. Uh, Dave asked if I would do that, cause he didn't wanna be a part of it. In Manona County, when I was over there helping out on an interim basis, um, the first time, we just ran an ad, got some applications. Made an offer, guy, you know, turned it down and then go through the whole thing again, and then we hired a human resources uh. Person to kind of help with the process, uh, you know, it's kind of your call, uh. You know, uh. It's not bad to get a professional involved, but it comes at a cost, you know, you're not always successful. Okay?
Carroll County did not do that?
No, no, they did not, so.
Zach came from Sack County, though.
Yeah, yeah, he was, he was in a neighboring county, so uh. You know, so I think Carroll's new one goes in system and. He was, he was the engineer. Sack in Cal, yeah, he was up there, but he actually lived or had some family down in Carroll County. So it was kind of a home for him in a way, um, but uh. You know, so you can certainly start that way, um, you know, and I've been sharing with people, you know, that this is gonna be happening and, you know, trying to. See if there's any interest, uh, you know, you have to, you know, you have to find somebody who wants to be here. You know, be part of the community, I've been very fortunate, this has been a really good place for us to be, for me and our, Jody and I, or even our family here. Um, so, uh. Yeah, that's one option, that's, that's one option to start with, so.
Oh, do you have it tallied up of how many, two thousand, how many bridges and?
Would be, it'd be real close to a hundred and seventy bridges that we've either eliminated, replaced, you know, or had or replaced. So I feel pretty proud about that, yeah, as I tell you, a lot of people don't realize a lot of the stuff that goes on. Um, you know, in terms of the grading projects, uh, well over a hundred miles, uh, probably in that hundred and fifty range. Um, haven't tallied that as quite as much as the bridges, but I mean, we've done fifty miles in the last half years. Uh, and, you know, some people are in favor of that, some people are not, you know, but we've done it all over the county. And the same thing with bridges, you know, the bridges, the grading, the overlays are just the things that kind of get done that make the whole system a better place. You know, and the paving projects, but the two things people are most concerned about, again. Our house, is my road in front of my house, or the road I gotta get from here to there?
Yep.
And how do, how good of a job did you do on the story? I think there really are the two things that, uh, it, it, it's just, it's just the way it is, and it's, it's okay, but. But there's all these other things that are going on that, you know, the people that just see in their area, maybe that bridge that, that helps them. Or maybe that paving project, you know, that they drive on, that, that we in the office are working on all the time. You know, it's constantly planning, it's, you know, it's not like what's gonna happen next week, next month, next year, it's what's gonna happen five years from now. You know, and so you, you have to kind of be thinking about that in terms of staff, equipment, facilities. And, and the things that we're responsible to take care of, so.
So, well, do you know how many applicants Carroll got?
We interviewed three, um, but I'm not sure, they had all, they were all surrounding county engineers. That they interviewed.
I mean, if they had a good runner up, I think they'd be.
Just don't know if they wanna be, I know, I know one of them, he's, one of them lived in Carroll.
No way.
Uh, they were all three actually neighboring counties that are there, but uh, um, yeah, you know, so that's a possibility. So, you know, if we look at our show, our, our surrounding counties right now, I mean Shelby, they just, the assistant just moved into that position. Ida County, their assistant is gonna move into that position, uh, I think Harrison County's gonna be retiring, or if he hasn't already, he is. Said, well, I should, I'll be careful. I think that's close.
Oh, on your.
Uh, Manona County didn't have one.
In your experience, like with interviewing at Carroll, what was kind of the timeframe, how many months ahead of?
It wasn't, it wasn't this far out, I know that, and I probably would have waited another month if you're at a.
But if we. If we kind of got the ball rolling, end of summer?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, you're, you're right enough, I was planning on doing this like late June, but.
Don't you think that we've, like, compared to them in known up, and I'm not trying to badmouth them anyway. Don't you think we have an advantage because you've got an outstanding system already in place? And you've got great, great staff all the way through, you know, and. Our bridge, that you brought up, how many bridges you've done, I mean, you've got, you, you're not getting handed something that's, wow, there's a ton of work to do in there. You know, I mean, there's always something to do.
There, there, there's always things to do, you know, and I had a good fortune of following Dale, and I really had a good fortune of having Chuck available to help, you know.
He might still get, 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 to get started, so, you know, I just kind of picked up where they, you know, where Dale left off and, and.
You know, he'd done a lot of really good things, and we continued to kind of do, you know, those things, but things are gonna be different. The bridges, I mean, we're looking to where we go next in the grading projects.
What do you have from a professional certification that I guess county engineers don't have that?
Well, probably two things, I mean, they have to be a licensed engineer, uh, but I'm also a licensed land surveyor. Which helps us out quite a bit, cause every project that we do, that's a contract project, we have to buy right away, and so. We do all that work in-house, except for the drawing of the plots, which we have Sunquest do that, and we could potentially do that in here eventually if we get caught up. Um, but uh, and then the uh, the bridge inspection, um, and. Ben and Casey, I mean, Casey's got all certifications to inspect the bridges, and I'm what they call a program manager, so someone has to review and approve it. So that authority lies with me, um, and so, you know, Ben hasn't done a lot of that, because he's been busy with a lot of other things. Uh, but certainly that, their, their position's got the training and the certifications to move into that role, which is whenever he feels comfortable doing that. But the land surveyor, he's got a land surveyor training, um, test, he's taken that and got to pass the LS exam to get his license. And then he would be able to do that too, you know, all of our grading projects, and we have the benefit of being able to do almost everything in-house. Um, except for probably the design of the concrete bridge structure, a box culvert, and if we have the time, we could probably do that too. But it's just, you can only do so much. So those are the two things, right? Yeah, you're gonna have to have a licensed engineer, and then it depends whether or not you get the, the other one standing with it, so. Um, so yeah, so that's kind of where we're at, um.
Right, well.
And, you know, i- if you want, you know, I don't know, if you're gonna have like a couple of you that are gonna be kind of working on that, let me know, i- if you want me involved. I'll be as, as involved or as hands off as you want me to be.
I say involved.
So, um, you know, and, and, and again, there, you know, my, my goal is to get into that twenty twenty five budget program. Get everything kind of lined up, so whoever does kind of move into the role can, can uh, can take off running in twenty twenty five and not.
Should help a lot too.
You know, so, yeah, I think that, and you know, just someone who wants to be here, our best case scenario is you get somebody who grew up in the local area. And wants to kind of be back in this area.
Now, I talked about he became a priest.
That's, I know. My God, we need them too. And then just a couple of other things, um, I'd really like to kind of space up my office just a little bit. New floor would really be nice, you know, you bring someone in, you know, so I was hoping to, to uh, to maybe do some things. If it has come out of our budget, we'll figure it out, but I just think, you know, it's not terrible with the floor, the floor is really bad in my space. I'm gonna be gone.
The whole first floor needs new floors, where there's not marble, they need new floors, right?
But, you know, it looks more like a farm shop floor in there than it is a professional office, and it's okay, I mean, I'm not. I'm complaining, but if you bring somebody in, here, here's you where you get work, it's a nice corner office. I am, I mean, yeah, here in about two and a half weeks, um, we're, my oldest sister's seventy six. I have two sisters, seventy two and seventy three, and then my youngest sister, they're spouses and significant others, and Julie and I, they wanted to go, they've been wanting to go to Europe a long, long time. So we're gonna go over there for twelve days.
Alright, nice.
Yeah.
So that'd be a good time if.
That'd be a good time to do it, I'd, I'd clear everything out, and I'd have it all gone before I get there, and have the guys kind of take it out, and it could be done.
Pretty fast.
That's pretty fast. Uh, i- i- it is Terry, I know.
Yeah, no, but.
But we could, if we could pick something out and just get that space done.
Oh, just back in your corner, oh, got it.
And then pick something out that we would.
Cause your whole office needs it.
But the whole office needs.
Yeah.
We've talked about that several years, they were immediate.
I know, I think. From a long time ago.
Yeah.
Kind of got, it was one of those cans that got kicked down the road.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Anyway, I don't know.
We made huge movements here, that, that those restaurants are us. So I, I'm not complaining, it's just that if you bring people in, yeah, I would take a look, it might.
I mean, Louise's office needs it, the assessor's office needs it, it's all the same kind of flooring, so.
Yeah.
Well, did we have a book, you said last time? He picks his stuff out?
No, I don't think anything got picked out.
We have samples.
We have some ideas.
It doesn't have to be in June, it's just that I was gonna be gone, it would be less interference.
No, that would be, we can make it happen.
You know, um, so.
Yeah.
I got one thing, have Damon or whoever, what's, uh, hundred and fortieth between H and I. Louis Hargan said there's some big old ugly cottonwood trees that probably should be addressed to be taken down. Cause a while back, his wife must have hit a branch.
When there's a lot of bare dirt yet, they were asking why we never put any of that hydromet on it.
H A Avenue, I was over there, that new bridge that we did, you know, a year and a half ago, it was finished up in twenty twenty two. But there's grass growing there, it's just not moving a lot.
Everyone's growing slow.
That was one we were gonna.
All the rain, exactly, to be.
I don't know why it is, yeah.
The ground is slow, the beans are slow, just no heat. It'll let spoil if we get the heat.
So. Okay. Thank you.
To do what?
Discuss the new flooring. You wanna get that? Get some samples again?
Yep.
Well.
I might have to leave.
Yeah, let's put on next two, David.
Sort of.
Our next item is discuss take action on credit card limit increased to ten thousand dollars to baby boutique account through August three for uh, two thousand twenty four. We do this every year because of the way the grants come in, uh, except temporary, uh, to just make sure they get the things purchased according to.
Yep.
Comes in.
Motion approved.
Alright. Any further discussion?
Is there a length of how long it'll be increased? Be till the end, right?
I actually read it. So we've got a moment to second, any further discussion other than that? If not, I'll call a vote, all favor aye. And we oppose in sign, Chair votes aye, so we have increased that limit temporarily till August thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Thank you.
There it is.
Okay. Thank you, Seth, so we have a discussion, take action on tax abatement on forty five fifty seven Donna Reed Road. Dennison of Michael Sarah Love, the new house they're building up there, yeah, the way we do the numbering on Donna Reed Road is really. Is, there's no rhyme and reason to it, you know, that really.
I think he kind of. It's all nine one one addressed, it's, it's so many miles south of the county line, and then the fifty seven would be. Just a scotch over a half mile south of the north intersection. The scotch.
Twenty five twenty inch, their, their address, it's not, it's not normal.
There is a rhyme and reason to them.
Yeah.
What do they think in construction?
Uh, they are thinking of starting later on this week. Yes, um, they're well over a hundred thousand, they haven't started any construction yet.
They don't estimate, no, just, okay.
Yeah, I got an S, um, between one to one point five million.
It's just a little over.
A little.
Yeah, just a little, this is. Yeah, they've got that all leveled out, they've been putting gravel up there, and they're getting a nice space, and so, yeah.
No foundation, no, I didn't.
Motion approved, second.
Any further discussion, as I call the rule, all favor aye. Any opposed, same sign, Chair votes aye, uh, tax abatement has been approved for Michael and Sarah Love on Donna Reed.
Thank you, Seth, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Seth.
Seeing if we need to tweak.
I haven't took the time to really look through yet, and I'll try to get around to them, so. The way it's set up, I think. Thank you.
Alright, uh, discussion, take action on liquor license for the bake shop in Hollywood Chump Bay.
Okay, hold on.
I know.
This is a unique one.
That's what I thought.
So, as you know, the bake shop's located in Dennison, but they are gonna be part of an activity that's going on outside of Vale. Um, I can't remember the, the rule, the, the, it's at the, say again, oh, McCullough, yes. It's at where Pollock's salvage yard used to be, anyway, they're having some big event this weekend, rodeo, um. Okay, so the other part of the uniqueness is, um, currently, the bake shop's liquor license is pending dram shop. Mostly because it was originally filed to the city of Vale, and that location is not in the city of Vale, it's in the county. So that got rectified, I think it was Friday when Megan was on the phone with, um, I think it's Sarah over at the bake shop. That was orchestrating the license, so I don't know what the comfort level is of this board. But possibly approving it pending the approval of the dram shop. Because it is this weekend and you don't meet again, it's already Tuesday.
I understand.
You know what I'm saying, to not, not infringe on their ability to participate, but if they don't, if they don't. Pass through dram shop, then of course we wouldn't, that wouldn't get. Pass through dram shop, then of course we wouldn't, that wouldn't get approved, but.
Makes sense.
What is dram shop?
It's the insurance part of the liquor license.
Gotcha, good.
Hasn't happened.
So maybe if they get their ducks in a row? Right, you're saying, yep, you get your ducks in a row, you can go ahead, we'll approve that liquor license, if you don't, no liquor license.
So you want to draw on the proven, like, depending on.
Pending dram.
Second.
All right.
As your motion.
Second, okay. Okay.
Your's hope today.
Any further discussion, the rest will call a vote, all favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposing sign? Chair votes aye, so it's been approved pending dram insurance, all right. Uh, discussions, uh, the sales agreement on the annexed building on North one oh five North Main Street, we had, uh. Talked to all of the local, uh, real estate agents in Crawford County, and so they, uh. Each one will have the same opportunity to sell the property, they'll all be listing agents, uh, the greatest five percent for the commission, which was agreed upon. Um, and so, we just need to approve, uh, getting that out there, get it advertised, and start getting that building ready to be sold. Um, so as we get, yeah, the building done, in hopes of getting that moved over, and, uh, investments of interest. And the city agents.
You're a.
Yeah, so, let's just get it, uh, get it on the market, so we need a, a motion to authorize, uh, we need to sign that, uh, sales agreement, so we get done with our.
Sold.
We listed at one ninety-nine, one hundred and ninety-nine.
Is that after the, when I say the analysis by the builders, that's the estimate that they thought it would?
They kind of used the building where, uh, Vision twenty twenty used to be, right, uh, east of United Bank of Iowa, where that building sold for one seventy-six. We have horse station, we have a station, and we have a, uh, access to an alley. In some of the, so, that was the price that they felt could be up there, marketable value.
Perfect.
Kind of where that went.
One ninety-nine even?
Ninety-nine, I believe, it's been a week since I looked at it.
Okay, that's okay. That's two.
Yeah, so, you can always go down, but you have to back off, so.
Always go over.
Go up, well, you could, if there's.
More than two people's all it takes.
We can hope.
More than one. Takes a leaf doing.
We're hoping for that, so, I need a motion.
We do, you have a motion second?
I do.
Great location.
That's our small bar.
All right.
Catch up with us, Jean.
Right, you guys are talking, everybody's talking, I can't hear everybody, so I clap my hands again, that's back in order, all righty.
We're testing you.
All clear, you are, constantly, all favor, aye.
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 Any closing sign, Chair votes aye, the property is now officially on the market. All righty, so our next item is to, uh, go into a closed session to discuss the slow restoration, uh, ordinance, uh. And potential litigation, I mean, motion going.
You do a session.
Go in closed session. Hobart?
Second.